Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Clerk, you may call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genetino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. If you remain standing for a moment, a silent prayer of reflection. Thank you, please be seated.
Thanks, Mayor, we do have a couple of announcements this evening. Some upcoming public meetings here at City Hall next week on Tuesday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, at six-thirty PM will be the meeting of the Public Art Commission. That meeting will be held here in Council Chambers at City Hall, twenty-four South Street. And then, the last week of the month, as it turns into the month of March, we will have on Monday night, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM, the monthly meeting of the City Zoning Board of Appeals, and that'll be here at Council Chambers, Memorial City Hall, twenty-four South Street. And then the following night, it'll already be March, Tuesday, March first, two thousand twenty-two, at six-thirty PM, will be the March Meeting of the City Planning Board. That meeting will be held here in Council Chambers, Memorial City Hall, twenty-four South Street. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any presentations to be heard.
None.
Public to be heard?
At this point in time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? One more time. Very well, we'll have a second chance. At this point, we've closed the public-to-be-heard. Public hearing for enacting the adoption of section four-five-eight-b of the RPTL for Cold War Veterans Exemption. Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Is there anyone here this evening wishing to speak in regards? Very well, we'll keep that meeting open for a while longer. Meeting minutes, correct?
Yep.
We're all out of sync now. Prove the meeting minutes from January twenty-seventh of this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Castro. Corrections, deletions, additions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Minutes from February third of this year. Do we have a sponsor?
That'll be next week.
It'll be on next week?
Yep.
Clerk and I have to get our act together. You probably told me already. Mr. Diker, City Manager, clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I see that the clerks got up on the screens, the flood watch that's impacting the area for today and tomorrow. With that in mind, and we know we have some problem spots around the city, especially with the snowpack and the expected snowfall, our water and sewer departments have proactively pre-staged some bypass pumping equipment in some of our target areas, and we're doing some catch basin clearing over the last couple of days also to try to reduce the impact of that, should we see it. So, crews have been out trying to be proactive with that. I probably would normally not mention this, but it's a property that is often talked about in the city, and there's some activity going on there now, so I'm assuming at some point, somebody's going to ask you all a question, or ask us a question, and we've already had some people notice. Yesterday, Jenny Haynes, our Director of Planning, and I had a conversation with a representative from Alstom, who is the new owner of Bombardier, and there is some work being done at that property over the next few days. They're taking an opportunity to evaluate the property, to try to move forward, we're told, with a decision on how they're going to utilize that property. So, while I don't have any details to share with you, it was nice to actually hear something from the company that was initiated by them rather than our staff. So, I look at that as a, hopefully, a little bit of progress in the ongoing roughly twenty-year saga of an empty Bombardier building down there. Hopefully, some good news to come in the future with that. But you may hear from folks in that area or driving by that they're seeing something going on. The other thing that's happened this week is we had our monthly nuisance abatement committee meeting, and aside from a number of residential complaints that we dealt with, one of the other things that we dealt with, there were a couple of them, were two-fifty-five Grand Avenue, the Grand Avenue Hotel, which was closed a couple of weeks ago, and ask Mr. Garland if he wouldn't mind giving us an update on the status of that.
Certainly, Manager. I would characterize the interactions that I have had and the code enforcement office has had with the owners of the Grand Hotel as positive. At this point, they are showing a desire to bring the property up to code compliance. They've been into City Hall to inquire about blink permits, and I've also had several phone conversations with a member of the younger generation of hotels regarding the property, and it's my opinion that both he and his mother are taking this matter seriously. So, we don't have a return date on our court papers yet, but I suspect that will be forthcoming presently. So, all in all, on that property, we have relatively positive results so far.
One of the other top... Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Castro, do I?
You may not be able to see each other.
Are they up to date on money they owe us?
I... Well, Counselor, I personally am taking it one piece at a time, not in the Johnny Cash sense, approach to this problem, and my piece of it is the property maintenance. I have not heard from any other member of staff in City Hall that taxes have been paid, so I think it would be reasonable to assume that that has not yet occurred.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I can't tell you that the family is aware of the fact that there are significant arrears, and have indicated to me that they plan on addressing that.
Thanks.
Mr. Garland, is it locally on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, along those same lines, one of the other issues that came up at our nuisance abatement committee meeting was a couple of properties in close proximity to each other on Franklin Street, one being Burn Dairy, which was the address, or complaint address, for nearly one, the average of one call a day for the Auburn Police Department in two thousand twenty-one, over three hundred, I believe around three hundred fifty calls for service at the Burn Dairy. So, we've reached out through Corporation Counsel's office and have a dialogue started with the folks at Burn Dairy. Probably more impactfully is the smoke shop at, I believe, number sixty-seven Franklin Street, which has been the site of several police responses, significant police responses, violent issues going on there, several complaints from people in the neighborhood. And those two situations, in my mind, are somewhat unique. The business owners of Burn Dairy are... They sound like they want to work with us, and they are, in some ways, the victims of the people that are coming in and out of their business. They're running a legitimate business, but the clientele that goes in and out is problematic. In contrast to the smoke shop, which, based on some of the more recent police activities there, were conducting illegal activities out of their business. So, we'll be taking a different approach to dealing with both of those properties. We are concerned, and I know that we've talked to Council in the past, and there's been some interest that you've all expressed in trying to have some sort of oversight, or I hesitate to use the word "control" or "regulation," but some sort of oversight into smoke shops throughout the city. And we've been made aware that there are potentially two more smoke shops opening up within a one-block area of each other in downtown. So, it's certainly an issue that we're going to continue to look into and try to do our best in cooperation with the Police Department Code Enforcement to make sure that those enterprises are running in line with our rules and regulations clause.
Mr. Manager, if I may, I believe your office has set up a meeting with Tobacco-Free CNY, a public health worker from that entity, reached out to our office and offered her services after seeing a... The article in the paper of the APD's raid on sixty-seven Franklin. I believe that meeting is scheduled for the seventh of March internally, and that's, at that time, as I understand it, this person's specialty is working with municipalities to directly address the particular problem that smoke shops create. So, we're... I personally am looking forward to that meeting, and I'm pretty optimistic that we can engage in some strategic thinking to address this problem.
Just one question for the chief. Now that the smoke shop is gone, is there other areas up there, other locations, that is attracting the wrong clientele? It seems like that area's been a problem area for a long time.
And we believe that a lot of that came from the amount of calls for service that we had from Burn Dairy. There is a homeless shelter up in that area that I believe makes their clients go out during the day to go find, seek employment, seek housing. So, they were hanging in the area also. So, I think it was a combination of a few things where that area got very busy for us amongst the traffic that we had to deal with in that area, cars parking on both sides of the road, making it difficult for people to pass through there.
And just to clarify, Counselor, I do not believe that business is closed down currently. It closed down for a couple of days, and it's back opening currently, correct?
That is correct, City Manager.
It's a tough area. Thanks.
Thank you.
You have one for the chief?
No, not for the chief, for the manager. So, I know that Franklin Street location was in front of the nuisance board, as you said. Can you share with us what the actions are going to be against that property, based on the findings of the nuisance board, since it is still open?
It is still open. The way the nuisance board works is we have to provide appropriate notification to the property owner and business owner. Those things are still happening. So, there's a series of events that will happen, that are already in play. So, there will be another meeting on March sixteenth of the nuisance abatement committee that'll take that to the next level, and then a final hearing is slated for the April meeting of the nuisance committee.
And Counselor, the remedies that the nuisance abatement committee has available, should they see fit after a fair hearing, include closing the business, revoking the certificate of occupancy for that property and for any other property that the owner owns within the city, and revoking any business license that the city may issue.
I know that legally, there's a process we have to go through, and I respect that, and I... Based on what you both have briefed us on, we are using that legal process to the full extent, and I appreciate that. I know that we had tossed around the idea of some type of permitting or licensing, and I know that with the legalization of cannabis in this state, that we have to be careful that we're not overstepping that. But obviously, these places aren't permitted to sell that because you can't sell it yet. I'm just... I'd like to revisit that, because here's my fear. This person that is operating a business on Franklin Street, obviously, is operating a legal business. We see others opening up. Is that individual connected with these others? How do we know that? We don't know that unless there's some type of permitting process, where we're putting on record who's filing for that permit. I mean, and I know that it creates work for staff. I just, I want us to be as proactive as possible, and I, you know, we permit for vendors on the streets, you know? So, I'm not asking to do that, I'm just asking that if we can consider that in this whole process.
And I think that'll be part of the conversation we have with the individual on March seventh, I think, Counsel. So, those are all things that staff is looking into, as, you know, what steps can we take? What are steps we can take legally without having significant pushback that renders that whole effort useless?
And I guess I do have a question for the chief too, in regards to Franklin Street, and I know if it's an ongoing investigation, there's only so much you can say, but it is still an ongoing investigation as to what occurred there and what the ramifications of what occurred there?
Correct. We definitely will have charges. We're working on that now, and after confirming with Council, that will help in our nuisance board. So, I'm working on those next week to get those forthcoming.
Does the individual who owns the specific business, not the building itself, but the business, does he or she reside in the city of Auburn?
My understanding is no, and he has only been in the area a couple of times.
Thank you.
One last thing on that topic is we have talked to several of the business owners in that area that are interested in cleaning the area up, so to speak, and making it more inviting for their clients and their clientele. So, we've planned to, in the future, work with them collectively to get them together to try to coordinate their efforts and see if we can make an impact that way.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? How many smoke shops are there in the city of Auburn? Do you know? Do you... I'm sorry, Chief.
I'm just counting in my head.
It's okay, Counsel, I can use the exercise. I know of two other ones in Auburn, and there's one just outside the city, and I know this because since we executed our search warrant on the one, I've received calls on a couple others. So, the public is talking, they are giving us information on the others.
Thank you.
That's all I have, ma'am.
All right. Let the chief sit down for a second.
Just one quick question. I call it the alcohol building, because I'm kind of a little older than you, but are they up to date on taxes and everything?
Yes, yeah. Throughout the last, again, roughly twenty years, they've continued to maintain their property to an extent and pay their taxes.
Great, thank you.
Counselor, you and I have Mr. Luke here, probably the only ones remember before it had the blue skin applied, the individual windows with the red paint. All set, Mr. Diker?
Yes, sir.
Reports from members of council, counselors.
I'll just report briefly on my weekend, because I know, probably wonder what I did last weekend. Actually, I went to Albany to the Nikon Conference, and I just wanted to mention the three big topics were the Super Bowl, the budget, cannabis. Actually, Super Bowl wasn't a topic, because bills weren't in it, so nobody really wanted to watch it. But I just want to mention that they did present a report on their summary of the budget, and just as we've mentioned here, that the governor's executive budget includes an investment she's interested in making in our infrastructure, putting it in the budget right away and not asking municipalities to go out and reinvent the wheel every year and put it through the other houses, five-hundred million increase for drinking water, wastewater, more investment in Environmental Protection Fund, the Clean Air Bond Act, and so forth. A lot of funding, and I think we've touched on that here, so there was a lot of conversation about that. One thing that they didn't like was that the governor would like to impose on municipalities that we need to provide the opportunity for owners to build an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. We already have it, we already have zoning for it, it's already in the books, but there are a lot of cities there that are like, what if we don't want it? Well, it's mandated, it's... They're proposing to mandate it, and it's to help alleviate the costs, you know, in-law apartments, you know, you've got a grown child that doesn't want to live in the house, but they can't afford to buy a house. So, that was discussed a lot. That was just interesting, interesting learning curve for me. But the main thing people wanted to talk about was cannabis, and we talked about it last week here. The conversations we're having right now are similar to what I heard there. So, we had a representative from that council give a presentation and talked a lot about locations, as you mentioned, Counsel, last week with Mr. Salvick, but also took us through some of the details. I mean, one of the takeaways I had was the way they tax it has to do with potency. The state really wants to encourage people to get the lighter potency products, so they're going to be less expensive. But people are very concerned about what you can have in your community, the distances, and that is going to be... That guidance is going to be given to us by the state, because they said we don't want to have one to have five retail shops, and then there's nobody growing it, you know, they have to truck it in from someplace, so... And the other thing is, you know, you've got a town like Lake Placid that has people coming in from everywhere during seasonal periods, and they don't have the capacity to manage this, and I felt like we were in a pretty good position when I heard what some of these other communities, villages, and towns are getting going through. So, anyway, a lot of conversation about that. I did receive materials, if Counsel wants me to pull them out to just to look at, I'm happy to do that. I'll be happy to share. Yeah? That's it?
Council Resolution Number Twenty-three of two thousand twenty-two, approving submission of the two thousand twenty annual action plan amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Cuddy, or Counsel Genetino?
Council Resolution Twenty-three of two thousand twenty-two, whereas the city of Auburn is an entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant Program and is required to submit a five-year consolidated plan with an annual statement of objectives and use of CDBG entitlement program funds. And whereas the city of Auburn has prepared the two thousand twenty annual action plan amendment outlining the community development activities, objectives, and budget for the use of the CDBG coronavirus stimulus grant, and whereas the city of Auburn published a notice of annual action plan amendment on February sixth, two thousand twenty-two, to start the local comment period and held a public hearing in Council Chambers on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-two during the period. And whereas all comments received, including those made at the public hearing, will be included as part of the two thousand twenty annual action plan amendment, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Auburn that the two thousand twenty annual action plan amendment is hereby approved. The mayor is hereby authorized to submit the amended two thousand twenty annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and to sign the application for federal assistance, together with any and all documents necessary to carry out the resolution, and the City Comptroller's Office is hereby authorized to recognize grant revenue and appropriate funding into the correct departmental budgets.
Discussion, Counsel? Counsel Genetino, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Haynes, if you don't mind, I have a couple of questions. In the wording, it mentions that landlords will be monitored for two years to ensure affordable rent is charged and that units are rented to tenants of low to moderate income. Who establishes what affordable rent is?
HUD establishes that. Fair market rent is established for each area of the state.
And I know the money is for minor repairs and/or mortgage tax payments. How do we... And I did discuss this with you for full disclosure during the week, how do we make sure that we're not rewarding bad actors? Because there are, as we know, several, as we learned, several bad actors throughout the city who own properties that are disrepair, and they have long histories of not maintaining their property.
Right, so Tiffany, I talked about this a little bit. We can put some provisions in the application to make sure that we're objectively reviewing the applications for, you know, previous tax delinquencies, chronic code enforcement issues with property owners. We have that data in our software, so when we have an applicant that comes forward, we can take a look at that and make sure that there's objective criteria that we can hang our hat on for denying applications to landlords that have been, you know, a chronic issue with code enforcement or taxes. We can do that.
No further discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Appointment Resolution Number Twenty-four of two thousand twenty-two, confirming an appointment to the Auburn Industrial Development Authority. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Cuddy, second by Counsel Genetino.
Appointment Resolution Twenty-four of two thousand twenty-two, whereas in accordance with New York State Public Authorities Law, Article Eight, Title Fifteen, Section Twenty-three zero four, the mayor recommends appointments to the Auburn Industrial Development Authority with set appointment to be approved by the council. Whereas in accordance with set Public Authorities Law, Ada Board membership must consist of a chairman and eight members, which members shall include two members of the common council of the city, one representative of the city school board, one representative from each of the specific business, industry, and labor, and two members at large. Whereas there has been one resignation from the Ada Board from a member that served in an at-large board position, and whereas the mayor is recommending for appointment to this vacated position, Ms. Lisa Green residing in the city of Auburn. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council confirms the appointment of Lisa Green residing in the city of Auburn, New York, to the Auburn Industrial Development Authority Board for a term to commence immediately and last through January fifteenth, two thousand
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, last night, we had a Ada meeting, and Roger Beer, who had served on the Ada Board for the last few years, served as our treasurer, and as I said last night, it was a pleasure serving with him on that board. We have seen a lot of activity over the last few years, a lot of growth over the last few years, and he served as our treasurer, having experience as a CPA, and he served the board very well and served the people of Auburn very well, and we thank him for that. I also am very pleased to... That we are voting on his successor tonight, Lisa Green, former comptroller here at Auburn and currently serving Auburn School District as their comptroller. So, I think Ada will continue to have the kind of financial oversight and accountability that we have had over the last few years, and I look forward to working with Lisa Green on this board.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Garland, I'm all in favor of... Mr. Garland, I'm all favor of Lisa joining the Ada Board, but is there any chance of a conflict in interest, because she does work in the school district?
Ms. Mayor, I believe that the bylaws and statute, enabling statute that created Ada require membership from the school board. I believe that's part and parcel of what Ada does. I certainly could be mistaken, but I, to answer your question directly, I don't see a conflict on the face of things.
No further discussion. Clerk, if you call the role in regards to the Resolution number twenty-four.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Down to, we have a table items, staff members, other public hearing, better public hearing open still. God, the clerk is here this evening. Public hearing is still open, adoption of Section four, five, eight, dash, B of the RPTL for co-armed veterans exemption. Is there anyone desiring to speak in that regard? Very good. Will you propose to close it?
Just close it.
Okay. No, at this point, we close the public hearing, and we know that there was no speakers. Other business from the council, from the council? All that to be heard? Last chance, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Zach Tripelo, I live at sixty-five South Street. Thank you for your information earlier on the smoke shops around the city. I'm concerned that we're building our local economy around substance use, if not substance overuse, and substance abuse. Might I remind you that Nick's Ride was recently moved from downtown, and the location has been replaced by what may be called a smoke shop. Now, walking across from a local counseling center, which helps people with their addiction, I see another smoke shop going in, catered corner to the police office. It makes me think that it will be safer from robberies, but also that as legal marijuana reaches prominence, we are becoming too dependent around breweries and around medicinal marijuana downtown. Furthermore, I think if there is retroactive legislation, it could spite these businesses and leave more vacant spots without sustainable business to replace them. As our healthcare industry is stressed under the weight of COVID-19, a still very real issue, substance abuse could detract from their ability to properly care for every city and for every city residents. Again, the dependence on this as business and the dependence on this as a drug is a very real concern to the city. And I encourage the council to take any necessary measures to regulate it within their power. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that all that deserves to be heard this evening? Very well, close the public to be heard. Mr. Dyer, do you have a request for your executive session?
Mayor, we have a, one item related to the employment history of a particular individual.
Very good. Members of council, on a, any tend to that attend? Very well, entertain a motion for executive session. Counsel Kent, second, Counsel Cuddy. Clerk, if you call the role, please.
Motion for executive session five thirty-four P.M. Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. For recessed executive session.